Thank you councillors. Welcome to the 775th Ordinary Council meeting. I declare this meeting open at ten AM. I would like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being webcasted and audio recorded. I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land in which we are gathered and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. Councillors, can the gallery please be upstanding if you're able and join me in a moment of contemplation? May we be thankful for this day, for its blessings, its opportunities and its challenges. May we appreciate and embrace each day as it comes. May we build strength and resilience within ourselves and unity with each other. May we be challenged to give our best always in service to the community and for the benefit of the future generations. May we be assured of a higher presence with us always. Thank you councillors, you may be seated. Leave of absence, we have no leave of absence to record. Councillors, condolences, do any councillors have any condolences to raise? None being so, councillors please stand if you're able to join me in a moment of reflection in honour of those who have gone before us and in support of those who have left behind. Thank you councillors. Congratulations, congratulation reports. We have one congratulations report to consider, I now refer to item five point one of today's agenda. It is with great pleasure to acknowledge the great work of council in being awarded the Report of the Year in the 2020 Australasian Reporting Awards for the 2018-19 Annual Report and also winning its fifth gold award in a row at the same awards. Judges compared gold award winners from every sector and determined Logan City Council had the best annual report in the Asia-Pacific region, setting the standard for global best practice. Logan City Council's annual report was particularly recognised for the open and honest way in which it reported on challenges, with a focus on full disclosure across core aspects of the business. I now invite the award recipients to the stage, can the following officers please join me? Dane Paltman from the Business Transformation Branch and Deena Wirrawan from the Marketing and Events Branch. Councillors please join me. Councillors, I'll open it up now for congratulations. So councillor Bradley, oh sorry, I've got to remove that report, sorry, you were correct. I now move the motion for item five point one in which to receive the report is there a second to the motion? Councillor Hall, the second of the motion, I now open the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, the motion has been carried. So councillors now ask for congratulations from each councillor, councillor Bradley?
No Mister Mayor.
Councillor Lane?
Thank you very much Mister Mayor, I would like to pass my congratulations along to Winham.
You're welcome.
Siri is such a naughty, naughty thing. So I would actually like to pass my congratulations along to Mission Possible Sewers. Mission Possible is made up of volunteers from many different communities around Logan who contribute sew, knit and crochet for the community. We have ladies from Green Bank Gardens, we have Logan Village Garden Club who are all knitting, crocheting and sewing towards the community and during these very trying times are doing face masks, blankets, beanies and making sure that people are being taken care of. Now surpassing 10,000 items is a great example of a local group doing really well in the community, so congratulations to them.
Thank you councillor Lane, councillor Russell?
None from me today, thank you.
Councillor Kuransky?
No, thank you Mister Mayor.
Councillor Raven?
None for me Mister Mayor.
Councillor Hall?
Nothing at this time Mister Mayor.
Councillor Fraser?
Nothing at this time Mister Mayor.
Here councillor Heremeyer?
Not at this time Mister Mayor.
Councillor Bannon?
No, thank you.
Councillor Stev?
I have a couple Mister Mayor if you don't mind. Okay, I would like to congratulate Mark Shudders from the Carbrook Golf Course for winning, Golf Club, for winning the 2020 Queensland Golf Industry Award Golf Club Board Member of the Year. This is awarded to the board member whose effort, dedication and contribution to strategic implementations and good government practices are ahead of their peers. I'd also like to congratulate the Carbrook Golf Club for being nominated as finalist in four other categories, including Golf Club of the Year and Junior Programme of the Year. Secondly, I would just like to wish my dad a very happy birthday and congratulate him on reaching the milestone of 90 years of age. He will tell you that the secret to a long life is to go for a walk every morning, have a glass of red wine every evening and make the most of every day, thank you.
Thank you councillor Stev, that will be acknowledged, councillor Wilcox?
Thank you. I would like to pass my congratulations on to Charlotte and Riley, who are both past students whom I taught of Flagstone State Community College. Their family of three became a family of four on the 15th of July when they welcomed their son Lincoln into the world and he has a very proud big sister Charlie. It is such a pleasure as a former teacher when you hear that your students have built successful careers and lives for themselves and are having their own children, although it does make you feel that little bit older when your past students are old enough to have their own children, thank you.
Thank you councillor Wilcox, that will be acknowledged, councillor Murphy?
Not at this time Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillors, now we have the confirmation of the minutes of the 774th Ordinary Council meeting held on the 8th of July 2020. I now refer to the minutes of the previous Ordinary Council meeting. I move that the minutes of the 774th Ordinary Council meeting held on the 8th of July 2020 be confirmed. Is there a second to the motion?
Happy to second it Mister Mayor.
You're seconding the motion?
Yeah councillor Bradley.
Okay councillor Bradley is seconding the motion, so does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Nope, I now open the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hand. Thank you councillors, that's been carried unanimously, the motion has been carried. Now we've got the confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on the 20th of July 2020. I now refer to the minutes of the previous special council meeting. I move that the minutes of the special council meeting held on the 20th of July 2020 be confirmed. Is there a second to the motion? Councillor Bradley has seconded the motion, does anyone wish to speak to the motion? No one wishes to speak to the motion, I now open the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hands. That has been carried, the motion has been, sorry, that has been carried unanimously, the motion has been carried. Councillors, business arising from the minutes, we have no business arising from the minutes to consider. So we come to the committee recommendations. I now refer to the City Governance Committee meeting held on the 21st of July 2020. Councillor Bradley, Chairperson of the City Governance Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I note there are no conflicts of interest for the 21st of July 2020 City Governance Committee meeting. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any further conflicts of interest they wish to declare? There being none, and I am now going to open for the floor for councillors to speak to the recommendations, noting that we do have one confidential item being four point one, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradley, do any further councillors wish to speak on those reports? No, there being no further speakers, councillor Bradley you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I now move the recommendations of the City Governance Committee held on the 21st of July 2020 be adopted.
Thank you councillor Bradley, councillor Bradley has moved the motion, there is a second to the motion. Councillor Wilcox has seconded the motion, I now open the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, the motion has been carried. City Infrastructure, I now refer to the City Infrastructure Committee meeting held on the 21st of July 2020. Councillor Lane, Chairperson of the City Infrastructure Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor, there were no conflicts of interest declared in the committee meeting. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts to declare? There being none, I'll now speak to the recommendations. Mister Mayor, at the City Infrastructure meeting, we actually raised a motion to, for the Director of City Infrastructure to report at each city infrastructure meeting on the progress of roadworks, waterworks and general infrastructure movement within the city. It's a really important thing to do per division. It allows councillors, number one, to report back to the community what's going on, it opens it up to transparency and it allows the community to know that things are actually getting done in the city, which is a really positive thing. This budget is a substantial budget and the people that are working in our city crews are doing an amazing job in a very trying time, but they're actually moving forward with road infrastructure to allow people to get moving around the city, so. I now call for discussion on the recommendations.
Thank you councillor Lane, thank you, do any further councillors wish to make comment? No, I'll just highlight one thing, I support councillor Lane on this, it was something I brought up in the Parks Department, Parks Committee many years ago and we have that report coming through and I can tell you that councillors rely on that information, so I'm looking forward to that report before coming from the infrastructure area, so congratulations on that. There being no further speakers, councillor Lane you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor and a big thanks to Daryl Ross, the Acting Director of the Infrastructure Area. I think one of the most important things is to acknowledge that in the interest of openness and transparency, the Infrastructure Committee has led the way in the city and I'd just like to say congratulations to that crew. I now move that the recommendations of the City Infrastructure Meeting held on the 21st of July 2020 be adopted.
Thank you councillor Lane, councillor Lane has moved the motion, is there a second to the motion? Councillor Bannon is seconding the motion, I now put it to the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, the motion has been carried, thank you councillors. Councillors, we bring out to the City Planning Economic Development Environment, excuse me, hang on a sec. I now refer to the City Planning Economic Development Environment Committee meeting held on the 22nd of July 2020. Councillor Raven, Chairperson of the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee, you may proceed, that is a mouthful.
Thank you Mister Mayor, we discuss every councillor around here, it is a mouthful and I'm still looking for a great acronym that we can use. Mister Mayor, there was a conflict of interest declared on item five point two in my committee by councillor Bradley. Councillor Bradley, did you still want to declare that conflict today?
Yes, I will.
Thank you councillor Bradley, do any other councillors have any other conflicts of interest I'd like to declare before I move on to discussion? There being none, I'll open discussions on the committee recommendations from the 20th of July with the exception of item five point two, as we'll deal with the conflict of interest at a later stage. Mister Mayor, I'd just like to speak to item four point two, which was the community engagement strategy that the Planning and Economic Development Team presented. I just wanted to commend council on doing something that we've really never done before and that's actually go out and have a strategy for making sure that when we do bring up new planning matters and we will have a new planning scheme that we'll start consulting on this term, that we have a formalised strategy for how we're actually going to go out and talk to our community about it and not just speak to them but also listen to them as well. And we've looked around the country for the best practice and that includes digital interactions, not just Facebook posts, not just videos, but actually interactive games to engage with younger audiences so we can get their feedback because they're the ones who are going to have to live in our city for the next hopefully 50, 60, 70 years. We want to make sure that the planning that we do serves them, so I just want to commend the staff and thank my colleagues for their support. I'll now call for further discussion on the recommendations from any other councillors.
Thank you councillor Raven, do any further councillors wish to speak? There being no further speakers, councillor Raven you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I now move that the recommendations of the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee meeting held on the 22nd of July with the exception of item five point two be adopted.
Thank you councillor Raven, is there a second to the motion? Councillor Hall is second to the motion, I now put it to the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hands. Thank you, it's been carried unanimously, the motion has been carried. And now councillor Raven, we know we have to decide the matter of five point two. So councillor Bradley has declared a conflict of interest, they have indicated they propose to stay and participate in the meeting. In accordance with section 175E of the Local Government Act 2009, you must now decide if councillor Bradley has a perceived or real conflict of interest, provide the reason for your decision and also determine if they are free to participate in the meeting while the matter is discussed, including by voting on the matter or should leave the meeting. Firstly, we will vote on the motion that councillor Bradley has a perceived conflict of interest, is there a mover for the motion?
Mister Mayor, before we move on to voting, would it be appropriate for councillor Bradley to read out her conflict of interest for the benefit of the live stream?
Sorry?
Can we ask councillor Bradley to read out her conflict of interest for the benefit of the live stream?
I thought she'd already declared that she has a conflict.
She just said that she has it, but the nature of it, we're aware of it because we were present for committee, but I'm sure not everybody's listened to the recording at home, so for the benefit of transparency and making sure that everyone understands the conflict of interest of councillor Bradley.
Councillor Bradley, would you like to respond to that?
Thank you Mister Mayor, I counsel Mister Bradley, wish to declare a perceived conflict of interest in relation to five point two but the confidential item six point two of the City Planning Development and Environment Committee due to the following reasons. The report refers to Beanley Events Centre where my partner coordinates the venue. My partner's name is Michael Matthews and I have determined that the personal interest is not of sufficient significance that it will lead me to making a decision on the matter that is contrary to the public interest. I'll best perform my responsibility of serving the overall public interest of the whole of cities area by participating in the discussion and voting on this matter.
Thank you councillor Bradley. I might have to read this again now, so councillor Bradley has declared a conflict of interest, they have indicated they propose to stay and participate in the meeting. In accordance with section 175E of the Local Government Act 2009, you must now decide if councillor Bradley has a perceived or real conflict of interest, provide the reason for your decision and also determine if they are free to participate in the meeting while the matter is discussed, including by voting on the matter or should leave the room, the meeting. Firstly, we will vote on the motion that councillor Bradley has a perceived conflict of interest, is there a mover for the motion? Councillor Heremeyer has moved the motion, is there a second to the motion? There's no second to the motion, the motion has been lost. So. The motion has been lost, therefore we will now vote on a motion that councillor Bradley has a real conflict of interest. So now I ask, is there anyone wish to move that councillor Bradley has a real conflict of interest? That being the case, the motion has lost, I now, we will now vote on the motion that councillor Bradley has no conflict of interest. So we'll now take the vote that councillor Bradley has no conflict of interest, all those in favour? That has been carried, sorry. I've moved it, yep, so, sorry, we need a second for that, don't we? Yep, so before we put it to the vote, yep, councillor Raven?
I'll second the motion Mister Mayor.
You second the motion, okay, councillor Raven has seconded the motion, all those in favour? Thank you. Councillor Heremeyer, you're abstaining or have you abstained from the vote?
I'm voting against.
You're voting against, thank you councillor Heremeyer. Okay, so I will now hand it back to councillor Raven.
Thank you Mister Mayor, the reason for the, that we determined that the councillor Bradley did not have a conflict of interest is that the nature of the interest is not significant enough, that it would be considered a conflict of interest as councillor Bradley's partner would not receive a benefit nor a detriment from the perceived conflict or the nature of the report. Now that we've resolved the conflict of interest, I'd like to open item five point two for discussion by my fellow councillors because I have nothing to add.
Thank you councillor Raven, we have now opened the matter for discussion, all those, any other councillors wish to discuss the matter? That being none, I'll put it back to you councillor Raven.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I'd like to move that item five point two of the recommendations of the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee meeting held on the 22nd of July be adopted.
Thank you, councillor Raven has moved the motion to a second to the motion. Councillor Lane has seconded the motion, I now put it to the floor to vote, all those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, that motion has been carried, thank you councillor Raven. Now refer to the City Lifestyle Committee meeting held on the 22nd of July 2020. Councillor Kuransky, Chairperson of the City Lifestyle Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor, there were no conflicts of interest declared in the committee meeting, but before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest they wish to declare? There being none, I'd like to speak to the recommendations. I was very excited to see our report five point one come up, which was our draft customer experience strategy from 2020 to 2024. And for those who didn't tune in during our committee round, I'd just like to speak to this report if I may. During our respective campaigns, I know a number of councillors received feedback from the community that they'd like to see better engagement with council. I'm pleased to let our residents know that this council's been working hard to enhance the relationships between council and the community and the endorsement of today's community experience strategy is a demonstration of our commitment to ongoing improvement. Council, as we all know, exists to serve and provide services to our local community and customers, which include residents, visitors to our city, people who work here, other government agencies, business owners and of course investors. As a large and diverse and complex organisation, we need a consistent framework, agreed outcomes and principle-based approach to ensuring all of our services are as efficient and effective as they can possibly be. The development of this strategy included community as well as customer feedback, where we invited participants to tell us their best as well as their worst experiences when dealing with council. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in providing highly constructive, valuable insights into how council is performing. From this work, we've developed an authentic and relevant approach for how council will continue to serve Logan not only in this term but beyond, with empathy, integrity and initiative. But our engagement doesn't stop here. Moving forward, this council will continue to liaise with customers and the community to confirm that we're on the right track with our strategy. So please keep an eye out on council's website, over the coming weeks there'll be further information as to how people can engage with council and our customer experience strategy 2020 to 24. And I'd really like to commend the officers who worked so incredibly hard to put together some frank and fearless advice as part of this report, it's a great credit to you. So thank you Mister Mayor, I would like to put a discussion forward for any other recommendations.
Thank you councillor Kuransky, do any councillors, further councillors wish to speak on this matter? None being so, councillor Kuransky you may proceed.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I now move that the recommendations of the City Lifestyle Committee held on the 22nd of July 2020 be adopted.
Thank you councillor Kuransky, councillor Kuransky has moved the motion, we need a second to the motion, councillor Raven has seconded the motion, we now put it to the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, please note that councillor Wilcox was vacant for the vote.
Excuse me Mister Mayor, can I have my name against the confidential item seven point one, under six point one?
Okay, thank you. Recorded that Kate? Yep, thank you. Okay, so the motion has been carried. So now we come up to council reports, we have no council reports to consider, we have no late reports to consider either. Petitions, do any councillors have any petitions? None being so, consideration of notified motions, we have no notified motions to consider. The general business, now before we start, might take the privilege to announce general business as mayor. Councillors, council has been made aware of a positive COVID-19 test of a staff member at Parklands Christian College. I am confident that the Queensland Health are doing everything to ensure the safety of the community, including closing the school and contact tracing. As Mayor of Logan, I have been informed that I will be given a full briefing by the Health Minister's Office today after the Premier's Conference meeting is held. Council is committed to supporting Queensland Health as the lead agency responsible for responding to COVID-19 and will provide support as required. Our top priority is the health and safety of our community, customers and staff. I can confirm there is no impact on council services or facilities. I encourage everyone to continue to practise physical distancing, good hand hygiene and please stay at home if you feel unwell. I encourage everyone to continue to practise physical distancing, good hand hygiene and please stay at home if you feel unwell. My thoughts go out to the families affected, please say, stay safe and take care of one another. That was my bit of general business, now we will continue with general business now, today we're up to councillor Kerensky.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and certainly some sobering news this morning. Mister Mayor, I just wanted to rise to speak to one of our exciting budget announcements that we made most recently, which was to actually progress the Logan Village to Yarra-Bilber rail trail project. Now, I recognise we haven't quite got the funding we need to construct the line, but we're certainly a huge step closer with a one point two five million dollar commitment from council. But why I wanted to speak to that is that the feedback from community has been incredible, people are hugely excited about this project, so much so that it would be remiss of me not to share that I've got my friends from the Bethany area and the Waterford area also asking me to champion the next section of the line, which is of course the Bethany to Logan Village component of the rail trail. So I just wanted to highlight it today, I know that that's a project you're also interested in and enthusiastic about getting on board with, and I just wanted to assure the community that I'll be doing all I can to motivate our council and beyond to continue to build this great project, the rail trail, thanks so much, Mister Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kerensky, councillor Raven?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I rise today to speak to the, that the planning scheme amendment and review that you'd actually called for in general business in the very first meeting this year. Just yesterday, the the consultation period for this this year's amendment closed, and I wanted to commend the community for the quality of the feedback they provided and the interest that they'd shown. So I've been, only been in this place for four years, I don't have the the twenty three years that you've got on me, Mister Mayor, but in that four years, I can tell you when I raised planning with people, they would nearly drift off to sleep because while it's a very important part of our job, it's also a very complicated and technical part of our job. But this time around, the community showed us that they were very engaged and interested in what was going on, they asked for workshops, they wanted one on one courses, and when they couldn't get them because we said, well up, we, we need to get this amendment into the state government so we can actually make some meaningful changes in the short term, they said, well, when will you provide us that training? Which is what drove the community engagement strategy that we saw come out of economic development this time around. But I just wanted to say again that there's been, I think just in the last day, so, and everybody always leaves it to the last minute, I like to cram for a test as well, but I think I got twelve submissions just on closing day, some of them coming just after hours, and I made sure they still got included because they were really valuable, these weren't just short one liners, these were eight, nine page requests, often having a lot of detail and consideration to not only the impact on the economy, but the environment and the future of our community. And when you've got a community that's engaged like that, we've got to do our part by listening to them. So we're going to make sure that with all the feedback that we get, that we, we actually go back and let people know what's come from the information that they've given us as we go through this amendment process, which I know councillors are very excited to to get stuck into, and we'll be able to give them feedback in the next few months, thank you very much, Mister Mayor.
Thank you councillor Raven, I just want to make note that yesterday we saw that there were sixteen pages of councillors' concerns. So, well done councillors, I've know you've taken an active role in getting this right, so thank you. Councillor Hall?
No business, Your Honour.
Councillor Fraser?
I've no GB, Mister Mayor.
Councillor Hare-Mayer?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I rise today to speak on the recent Covid case in our city. Our thoughts and prayers are with the families of Parkridge during these difficult times. It's more important than ever to stay alert, stay active and stay safe. If you have any concerns or any symptoms, however mild, please call the Covid hotline on one three four two six eight. Our community, our city and our country stands united during these difficult times, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hare-Mayer, Walport, councillor Bannon?
No, thank you.
Councillor Stimpf? Councillor Wilcox?
Not today, Mister Mayor.
Councillor Murphy?
Not at this time, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I do know that this particular item is close to your heart, so I do wish to put forward a general business item, and it is up on the screen at the moment, I'll read it out, that the sports, leisure and facilities manager in conjunctions with the economic development and strategy manager, the health, environment and waste manager and the parks manager be requested to prepare a report to a future City Lifestyle Committee meeting, considering the development of a mountain bike strategy for the city of Logan, specifically to address tourism and maintenance of trails. During the recent Covid nineteen restrictions, we've seen a massive hike in mountain biking in our city. It's one of our strategies that we've used in tourism to promote our city, and this weekend we've actually got a national event at Put Daisy Hill Conservation Park, which is in Division Three in councillor Russell's area. It's the first time we've ever actually had a national mountain biking trail event happening in our city. So this is certainly a great attractor to our city. But with attraction also comes problems in terms of erosion in, of our environment. We do have a number of trails that people have created themselves. So the intent of actually having this mountain biking strategy is to address all the issues, the environment issues, the tourism prospects that our city can get from mountain biking in our city, but also the maintenance of our trails, because like I said, a number of trails have just been made ad hoc. So that is the intent of this recommendation and I do wish to move it.
Thank you councillor Bradley, now before I open it up for discussion, I'd like to see, is there a second to the motion? Councillor Bannon has seconded the motion, now open it to the floor for discussion, councillor Lane?
Thanks, Mister Mayor, and I, I want to put my support behind councillor Bradley's motion. I think one of the most important things about mountain biking is the protection of the environment in which these people are actually undertaking their sport. I live on the very edge of Carrawatha Forest and at present there's a motion or a petition before the Brisbane City Council to cease bike riders in Carrawatha Forest. It's not because people who've been there for thirty years riding in the forest are doing the wrong thing. There are new people who are coming into the forest to enjoy mountain biking, they're actually damaging the systems that the protection society has built up. A good example of that is one of the frog habitation spots that they've, they've actually worked very hard on, was actually trampled by mountain bike riders over the course of the last few weeks. Now, people put their all into protecting the environment and ensuring that species continue in our local community. I think that the two can coexist, we just need to be very careful, and if councillor Bradley is pushing those environmental protections, I support this motion.
Thank you councillor Lane, any other discussion, councillor Raven?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and with your indulgence, Mister Mayor, because we haven't had an opportunity to speak to this during committee, I just wanted to ask councillor Bradley a question about the intent of the report, so if that's permissible?
You may proceed.
Thank you, so councillor Bradley, you're calling for a mountain bike strategy, but then you're also calling specifically around tourism and maintenance of trails. I know that we do have a destination management plan that sort of addresses tourism, but is what you're seeking specifically around the maintenance, is that the primary concern here? Because you mentioned that people are doing ad hoc trails and, and there's, they're causing erosion, is that the primary purpose of the report?
You may speak, councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, yes, certainly the environment is a big part of this and it has to be a balance. So for example, we've gone from forty thousand mountain bikers per month in Daisy Hill Conservation to seventy five thousand per month, that is a huge increase. It's very hard in our city to actually purchase a mountain bike. The mountain bike businesses are going really great, actually probably one of the the best outcomes that has come out of recent times. But people are seeking recreation obviously, but, and specifically mountain biking. So it has become a very hot topic in our community and one of, one of the things I'm lobbying our state member for is to actually address a particular issue in, in Division One, but that's got nothing to do with this report, where mountain bikers are going over a particular ball walk, so hopefully trying to create a new trail for them. But we've had a massive hike in interest in mountain biking in our city. It is something that our city promotes through the, the city of Logan and Visit Logan, et cetera, Facebook pages and, and council's website, et cetera, so for me it's about a balance and to ensure that our environment is protected at the same time. And I know that recently the mountain bikers had a, Neville Lowry Reserve had actually got together and did some maintenance on some trails, so hopefully this particular report will address those issues, particularly in our parklands, which certainly haven't had that.
Councillor Raven, has councillor Bradley responded to your questions?
Yeah, so it sounds like it's a yes, maintenance and, and protection of the environment is high priority. It sounds like it's already working from a tourism point of view because it's increased by nearly a hundred percent in, during the Covid times, and I can relate to people who can't buy a mountain bike, it's also very hard to buy rollerblades at the moment because everyone's out skating. So I guess then my next question is if, if it's about maintenance, is it something that you've raised with the, like with the parks maintenance team or with the director around this already? Or is this the first time they've had an opportunity to consider it?
Councillor Bradley, do you want to wish to respond?
Because it's such a complex item, and you can see that there are lots of managers involved, the whole intent is to coordinate it all. That's what the intent is. Because, can I just say, previously, it has only been, we've had the recreational strategy came via the sports, leisure and facilities manager before your time actually. But it doesn't actually address the other issues that I have just stated that have come to light in the recent months.
The maintenance issues. So, I just, Mister Mayor, thank you councillor Bradley, appreciate your candour and for your patience, Mister Mayor. It's just, to me, when you ask for a strategy, it's, it's a citywide process and I know that there are many places you can mountain bike in our great city, but when you ask for a strategy, it, it's much higher level than a maintenance issue. It sounds like you all must need a management plan to, to address the maintenance issues. I don't understand, as the Chair of Economic Development and, and Health, Environment and Waste, I can see where the environment comes in, but I don't understand how it would be anything beyond the Parks Manager to deal with the maintenance issues, other than consulting Health, Environment, Waste Team around what environmental concerns they may have. I just think maybe if the, if the goal of the report is to improve the maintenance, I mean, it might be worth discussing it with the director first, I don't know if the director's got any feedback she'd like to provide or if you're interested in hearing that. But it seems as though the report is going for a broad sweep when really it just needs a laser focus on, on protecting the environment, improving the maintenance, because it sounds like there's none at the moment, like there's a hole that we, we didn't realise because it's become so popular.
Thank you councillor Raven, that was the statement, so councillor Kerensky, I saw your hand go up, you should take this opportunity to discuss something now.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I was a little confused around the intent also of, of the motion and I thank councillor Bradley and councillor Raven for providing greater clarity with regard to that. As you would know, I represent the corner of the world that has Plunkett Reserve, which has actually got some mountain biking trails that are due to come on in the fullness of time. And discussion we had with regard to the potential of rail trails and connectivity to Plunkett Reserve, this is of interest to me if we're starting to look at how we're going to manage those mountain bike areas well. And whilst I'm at the beginning of the journey, I would hope that if we do in fact investigate this particular report further, that we provide our fledgling areas out there with perhaps a little bit of advice on how best to start as we move forward and not simply retrospectively look back on maintenance issues and also working with our partners like Lend Lease and so on who'll be investing in those trails. So I do welcome the report, but also as councillor Raven pointed out, it's a whole of city approach and certainly I think looking at mountain biking across the city in a holistic way would be appreciated in particular with regard to environmental concerns, so on this occasion I'm happy to support the report.
Thank you councillor Kerensky, any other speakers, councillor Hall?
Your Mayor, I'm a little bit concerned about the impact this may have on the wildlife because essentially to go forward with this, we're almost endorsing mountain biking and mountain biking tends to attract, mountain bike trails tend to attract other sorts of riders, which happen to be motorbike riders as well. And when we think about it, the wildlife that are in these protected areas, these environmental areas really have nowhere else to go. And when their homes are disturbed, they, they tend to go somewhere else and I, I really feel that it's a, it's not a good thing going forward to keep taking away from our wildlife for these leisure pursuits, which they quite often are, there are plenty of places where people can bike, we've got rail trails and whatnot going through, but we tend to be, just keep taking and taking away from the environment. Now, understand, we'd, we'd like to better maintain these areas to reduce the impact that they have on the environment, but we're putting on another maintenance cost onto our rate payers as well and these costs can, can surely blow out, you know, if these, if these trails become all over the place and we're, and Logan Council's kind of footed with the cost of maintaining all these areas. I, I just think, you know, it's, I have nothing against people going up into the mountains and, and being one with nature, but I, I hate to see paths and roads going through the environmental areas that, that these animals, our wildlife, has retreated to, I don't think it's a good thing.
Thank you councillor Hall, councillor Stimpf?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor. I, I agree with councillor Bradley that there is a need, need for this to ensure that the tracks are effectively maintained. They can count, they can, they can cater for riders of all ages and abilities, as I've seen a lot of families in our local area out on the tracks, it was not just about the mountain bike riders that are professional and experienced. It's important that they limit the impact on the natural environment and to identify their need for additional trails to basically meet the demand. I know that riders come from all parts of Logan and across Brisbane to use the trails in Daisy Hill and Cornubia Forest, but a plan can help consider the impact and the infrastructure needed to support events and increase use of the areas for the future.
Thank you. Councillor Stimpf, councillor Hare-Mayer?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I think something to, to remember is that this report is only asking for guidance. I think once we've received the report, then we can debate the ins and outs of mountain bike riding and, and motorbike riding, which I really sympathise with in my electorate. But I believe it's a bad precedent to set rejecting a report that only asks for guidance and no strategic direction. So I intend to, to vote in the affirmative for this purely because it is a report asking for guidance only.
Thank you councillor Hare-Mayer, any councillor Wilcox?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I would also like to put my support behind councillor Bradley's request for a, a report on the strategy as I myself am currently investigating a mountain biking trail up at the end of Spring Mountain, up off the end of Thornbill, it connects Spring Mountain to Springfield and it's, it's a fledging track which, in the Covid times, got a lot of use in that sort of thing. And I would hope that the strategy will investigate increasing the trails, not necessarily nuance, but actually improving the trails that we do have. And in the end, I think it will bring the tourism, inevitably that will boost our economy, it will make people, or it will bring people into the area spending in our local businesses and stuff like that, so I think it would be quite a good thing, thanks.
Thank you councillor Wilcox, councillor Bannon?
I definitely support it, and we're going to look at overseas with Canada, where I know your son spends a lot of time, Canada's the forefront when it comes to the mountain bike trails and they've got plenty of eco-friendly things they have to, to deal with and they do it very well and people travel around, they go from all over the world to Canada just to ride, so I think it's just a balance and I'm, rather than what councillor Hare-Mayer said, it's just a, it's just a report.
Thank you councillor Bannon, any other councillors wish to discuss this matter? Thank you councillors, I just, I understand the sentiment from many of the councillors here that the concern is that it's not addressing the environmental issues but more centring on the tourism part of it, but I accept where the report's going and I'm sure the officers will take what's been said into account. So now that the motion has been seconded, I now put the matter to the floor, motion to the floor. Those who are in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried, there's two councillors that haven't supported it, have you, are you against or abstained, councillor Raven?
Abstaining, Mister Mayor.
And councillor Hall?
Abstaining as well.
Thank you. Thank you councillors, now we'll continue with general business, you have any other discussions, councillor Bradley?
No, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, councillor Lane?
None today, Mister Mayor.
Councillor Russell?
None today, Mister Mayor.
Well, thank you councillors, I now declare the meeting of the ordinary council meeting closed at ten forty five, thank you very much.